I will open our regular select board meeting. It's Monday, August 21st, 2023 at 6:14 PM. We're in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We have remote access. It's on Zoom. It's being recorded for streaming now on local cable, as well as re-airing on local cable and YouTube and all of the good stuff. We can start with the pledge, please.
Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will accept a motion for the approval of Treasury warrant and payroll.
Make a motion to approve Treasury warrant 24-4 and payroll 24-PW4.
Second.
Second. Is there, Austin, is there anything significant that we need to be made aware of?
Uh, no.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On warrant detail, on the second page, I've never seen this before, 52-1, it sells recreation activities, 53E, one-half director salary. What does that mean?
Uh, so that 50, uh, that's the revolving fund. So the director's wages are paid through the revolving fund. So this is a portion of director pro salary.
Okay. Is there a reason why it's one-half?
No, I think that's 53E and a half.
Oh, 53E and a half, yes.
That's the revolving.
That's how the state defines it.
Ah, okay.
I'm sorry, Harry, I misunderstood.
That's okay, that's okay. Just asking questions. And I think that was it.
We have a motion and a second. Harry roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's and I recruit myself from cable activities.
Yalvin, I excluding safe place.
Jen.
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you. Um, I will, I think we'll split up the meeting minutes because I think we have some that were, um, not attended by everyone. So let's start with the August 3rd. I, it shows that Tom and Harry were absent. This, I think, was the emergency meeting that we held. So I would take a motion from either Paul or Jen to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August 3rd.
Jen, do you second?
I second.
Do either of you have any questions or comments or anything on those minutes?
None for me.
Then I would take a roll call. Harry?
Matt's and I.
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Yalvin abstain.
Jen?
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. Um, we have the August 7th meeting minutes. This was our regular scheduled meeting. And so I think everyone was here for these. I would take a motion to accept.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, August 7th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's and I.
Yalvin, I.
Jen?
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. And then we have the, um, the bylaw meeting minutes from August 9th. I think Tom was absent from these, so I would take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the general bylaw meeting for the bylaws and on August 9th.
Second emotion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's and I.
Yalvin abstain.
Jen?
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you all. Um, we have a full house tonight and we're running a little late. I'll keep my comments brief. I know, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Sorry for the delay in getting started. Back to schools next week for Wachusett, for Bay Pass, for a lot of our school students. So I just wanted to wish everybody, our college students are heading off this week, maybe have already headed off or are heading off soon. Back to work, back to school, back to everything. So I just wanted to wish everyone a good luck and be mindful of all the school buses and pedestrians and everything 'cause it's scary and we have a lot of kids out there. So keep everybody in your thoughts and well wishes for an awesome, awesome start of September. Anybody else have any questions or comments or anything for the?
Kids are back to school, yeah?
So I will move into public comment. We have a full house. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Well, of course, but because it is full house and you have other things to do, I will relegate on it for the time being. But I will see Austin.
Okay, I was gonna say hit up Austin or Tamika.
Yeah.
Anyone else here for public comment? Hearing none, okay. Uh, we will move into public hearings. We have two scheduled for tonight. So I will open the first one that was scheduled for 6:00 PM, the National Grid petition for pole installation on Hillside Road.
I believe the representative is on Zoom.
Okay. Um, is that?
I assume that's Robert Williams.
Robert Williams, are you with National Grid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have the, the letter for the petition. Austin or Tamika, did Chris have a chance to look at everything and?
He did, yep, he looked at the stakes. He had no concerns with them.
Okay. Um, does the board have any questions or comments or anything for Mr. Williams or Austin or Tamika? Is there any questions or comments from the public in regards to the National Grid pole on Hillside?
I have one.
Name and address, please?
Karen Cove, Rolling Ridge Road.
Okay.
What do these look like? How tall are they? You know, I mean, how big are they? It's gonna be right down the street from me, so we're concerned.
Okay.
So we're installing 40-foot poles. So I believe there's already poles out there that are 40-foot poles. So around the same height of what's already there.
Are these just like regular telephone poles?
Yeah, this is.
Okay. Why'd we come? Put telephone poles up.
My understanding is it's just an additional telephone pole to provide service to a house lot. Is that?
Yeah, part of the work on this is for residential service. The pole line that we're dealing with needed two poles put in, in the public way because of the span lengths in between the poles.
And see, to the question, I think that these are just a continuation of the existing poles, so it's going to continue to look as what's already out there.
There are poles, I'm sorry. There are poles that go all the way up to the farm now, the old Buffalo Farm and the brewery. So these, they must be different than what's already there.
They're the same utility poles we've been using. I don't know what you mean by if they're different or not.
You can hear him.
So.
I'm sorry. They're the same type of utility poles we've been using. They're just, you can see from the sketch that was submitted. I don't know if that was shown, but they're just going in between already existing poles to shorten the pole line span.
So they're just going between already existing poles?
To shorten the length of, of cable span between existing poles they're putting?
Very long currently.
If I may, um, so Chris just kindly asked that I remind National Grid that they need to be installed a minimum of three feet from the right-of-way for plowing purposes 'cause we've had some troubles in the past.
Okay. Robert, did you hear that?
Yep, I did. I moved those stakes back three feet for the pole markers so that it should be taken care of.
Okay, thank you. And none of these require guide wires or guide poles or anything, correct?
No, they do not.
And Leah, if anybody's interested, the sketch and the petition is posted on the select board page on the website and there's also hard copies in the town clerk's office if you wanted to see the sketch.
Take a look, alls we got was a letter saying.
Yeah, so the bottom referenced where the information can be found. So whenever there's a public hearing and anything, we'll always post it to the website and it's always at the town clerk's office as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just, just to be clear, there is a pole going in on the new residential lots, property that is getting a guy wire put out in the street because it's needed in order to deliver service. But it's not in any of the new poles that are going in. It's in an existing, on an existing pole location. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Did I answer your question, any questions you have?
Any other questions or comments from the public? Jen, do you have any questions or comments? Anyone else from the board?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none, I would make, take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on National Grid petition pole installation, Hillside Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, we can just, any questions, comments about closing the hearing? Harry roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's and I.
Yalvin, I.
Jen?
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. So then I would accept a motion to, um, approve the installation of the two poles as presented with the three-foot pushback as mentioned.
Uh, make a motion to approve National Grid's petition of the pole installation as amended on Hillside Road.
Yeah, I think just we want to make sure that that three feet is, is documented, that we've asked to have that three feet.
So just saying that the poles will be installed three feet from the right-of-way.
Okay. All poles on Hillside Road will be three feet from right-of-way, alright?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's and I.
Yalvin, I.
Jen?
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Um, I will now open the public hearing at 6:27. It was scheduled for 6:10. The notice of intent to sell chapter land, Carol Viner Emerald Road, parcel four, map 34B. We had continued this from our previous meeting. We were hoping to have some additional feedback from AgCom and planning board, I think.
And RDIC.
Yes, sorry, and RDIC. I thought there was another one, sorry. So we have, I think, the, um, sorry, I'm scattered for a second. So we have the info from, sorry, from the boards. Um, I think we had questions. We wanted to hear feedback from the boards. We have AgCom provided us a letter that is detailed and they would like to formally recommend the town proceed in exercising its right, a first right of refusal in acquiring the land. They believe the acquisition is significant value to the town. It has existing agricultural value. It is, it currently supports annual production of corn and hay as well as capability to produce forestry products. And it may be a potential site for future municipal use. They did note that their greatest concern is the development of the land as the area currently exists would not be most favorable to the town. The cost of community service analysis routinely showed residential use to be the highest cost of service to municipalities, which they included an attachment. Additional residential development would put undue stress on our town's current resources. They're concerned about the road surface by adding additional heavy truck and equipment traffic, as well as the addition of residential homes and the traffic that would, additional single-family homes would incur. They note that town residents have expressed an overwhelming desire to conserve Rutland's rural agricultural atmosphere and value open space. And they put it in the master plan. They feel that acquiring the land presents an opportunity to town to partner with local organizations and other municipal entities and consider partnering with a nonprofits such as Land Trust. And AgCom is willing to facilitate, to protect the valuable land. They were, they include an attachment from UMass Anheuser's, the financial impacts of land use in Massachusetts, which they reference, and American Farmland Trust, the Farmland Information Center fact sheet, cost of community services study. We have that from AgCom. The Board of Assessors, I think we had spoken about before, has no comment. Hong Kong, we had spoken about before. They view that there is, it could be favorable for recreation use such as fields, but don't see a funding mechanism at the time. DCR does not have, uh, an interest given their limited budget and full plate of projects. Planning Board discussed and the board recommends purchase of the land for future uses such as recreation and silvery fire station or leasing it as farmable land. They respectfully request that this, that we, the select board, consider using the proceeds from the sale of the Rutland Heights parcel for the purchase of the land. RDIC provided two memos, I believe. In a meeting held on August 16th, 2023, the RDIC voted five to one to recommend that the town purchase the 16 acres on Emerald Road for future use. The follow-up memo from that said that the meeting held on August 6th, 2023, the RDIC discussed Agricultural Commission's proposal to prioritize chapter property in town. RDIC members expressed concern with this approach because it would result in myopic analysis related to strictly agricultural purposes. As such, the commission kindly requests the select board consider a more holistic approach so that properties can be evaluated for future purposes, including retail, commercial, recreation. And they thank us for the consideration of this manager, or this manner, sorry. We had, um, an email from a planning board individual to recount, yes, in regards to the letter to be written. The individual does not agree with the fact the town should use RDIC money or Rutland Heights property money, but should look at purchasing the property. But it should be up to the select board and FinCom as to where the money, the sourcing comes from. I think that that's the, the summary of the letters that we had received. So I know our board was kind of a little bit torn as far as where, where to go with this because I think one of the big things was the, the land or the road, the, the status, the current status of the road and the potential for any development of that road not being in an easy avenue.
Yeah, I don't think you can ever put any major structure up there or certainly not for fire or police or anything like that. It's just not, the roads aren't set up for it.
And the cost to put that road in?
Yeah.
Would be enormous.
It wouldn't be, I don't think it would be worth it.
Enormous.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Maybe more for Austin, but are, are there any sort of state funding options that we would be able to grant money or anything for that infrastructure to help bring those roads up to speed? Or is that a cost the town would make too?
Certainly, there's a lot of money out there for infrastructure, including utilities, but also roadways. I will say they are competitive and we need to demonstrate that there's a significant benefit to whether it's economic development or, or for, you know, significant public purpose like public safety. I just don't think, in this case, for this particular lot, we're in a place where we have a proper plan to be able to be competitive for something like that. To give you a reference, Harry, you mentioned the cost. Palm Augusta Road project is about a mile and it's a $6 million project. I did rough estimates on RGAS platform. Whatever route you take, it's about a mile to a mile and a half. And we would have to do significant infrastructure improvements there. So to answer your question, Jen, yes, there's a lot of money out there, but we also would have to weigh, you know, how competitive we would be in terms of applying for this funding to be successful for that.
I had asked for a little more time to review it at our last meeting, which I did. And although the property would be beautiful that we could use it for, we just don't have the financing at this time to be able to do it. You're looking at $400,000 for the property and then several millions for the road to put the infrastructure in. And then we would take it out of tax status. So by the town buying it, we would receive no income whatsoever from the property. So that would put another crunch. Not only would we have to borrow the money for the roads and everything because we don't have the cash on hand to do it, that would create another tax, higher tax bill if we had to go out and borrow the money. So I look at it as, I'd love to have it. I'd love to set it aside for future use, but I just, fiscally, I can't recommend it to the town that we buy it at this time.
Um, I, I do have a question or a comment on that, Harry. The AgCom had said that, you know, even if we purchase it, even if it's not immediately used, you know, there's the option of leasing the property to continue to have it be farmed. Do we have any idea if that, if we have interest in someone that would be willing to continue to do that? Or any other potential leasing options where income could be generated in the, in the meantime?
I, I don't know, I didn't investigate it. But I, I'm looking at it from a financial standpoint. If the town spends $400,000 to buy it and we gotta pay at this rate 5% interest, that's costing the town $20,000 a year in interest. If we can farm 16 acres for hay and loaning out and they're willing to pay us $20,000 a year to recoup our interest charges, then I'd say it's up for discussion. I would be gladly discuss that to anybody that wants to have it. But 20,000 is a lot for 16 acres, so.
I think some of it is, it's chapter land, so we're not getting significant tax revenue from it right now as a town. And so I think to, some of AgCom's conversation is the, the cost that it will be to town for single-family homes. We know that it will likely, there'll, there'll be students, most likely. So there would be school bills, there's infrastructure costs there. It's not on water and sewer, it's on, would be well and septic. And so I think that there is the potential for there to be a cost to town on, on all sides, I guess. So that's, I just wanted to state that. I don't, I think it's, it's, it's tough for me, given the location and not hearing from, I was kind of hopeful that DCR, somebody would have some interest to kind of keep it as open space or move it towards that. I also am of the mindset that we have limited amount of land in town and it's not something that we're going to be able to make more of. So as the town continues to grow, it's not a today problem, but it's a thing that we need to be mindful of for 20 to 50-plus years down the road, where town might be. Harry, to your point, I, I hear that as far as it's, it's a big expense for, you know, potentially just to sit around for a while or recoup some, some income, but not necessarily all or whatever. So I, go ahead, Paul.
The town has had to pass on a lot of land purchases here over the years, okay? And so, you know, it just seems to, one thing after another, that every time something comes up like this, the town winds up passing off them.
Yeah, through the chair, my, I, I think it's, it's great that we've had an opportunity to review this land and I think we should do this every time, whether we buy it or not. But I think we've got a little bit of money going forward and we do have town-owned land. And I'd rather see us invest that money in the land we already own as opposed to spending money, $400,000 to have it sit without a plan. I, I just, those roads aren't, we're gonna, I, I don't see us redoing those roads anytime soon. So to spend $400,000 to have land sit makes no sense. I'd rather see that $400,000 spent on something we could do relatively soon, you know?
And Leah, you're right. We don't get much taxes, but we do get, I think if I looked at the report, around $2,600, $2,800 a year out of that. So not only would be incurring the interest expense on $400,000, we'd also be losing the $2,600. So financially for the town, we just passed two and a half. We're starting to get into a good position. So for me, I, I just, I can't see the, the economics in it. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Peter Crain Nate's way, in my opinion, the road argument is specious at best because when, it's not a formal subdivision yet, but there is a plan out there for that that has a considerable number of lots. The roads that exist today in the shape that they are will, will cost the town money if we do not improve those roads, period. When you think about the land, the, the cost to the town, every time somebody gets a flat tire, every time somebody has anything happen to the car because of the condition of the road, I admit the roads are in bad condition. My statement is, we're going to have to upgrade the roads anyway, sooner rather than later. And it doesn't matter what the use of the land is. So I don't believe that the roadway and the cost of the roadway have to enter into this as part of the decision-making process.
Well, through the chair, have a question. There's a member of the planning board here. That hasn't already been approved for anything, right?
No, it has not.
And wouldn't approving it somewhat be based on the impact to the town based on roads?
Not necessarily.
No, but it could.
As it is right now, no.
Listen, I, I know.
I know what you're talking.
I know the history, no offense. It's take the path of least resistance for a lot of boards in town. But that is, that can come up, right? I mean, if, if you're talking about putting in 60 homes or whatever it is and it impacts the town in a negative way, doesn't that come into play?
Yes, it does.
When selling it and approving it?
As a condition, we could probably put a condition in there, special condition.
That they?
But you don't think you can make someone else develop the road?
No.
The public ways. They are, that is a responsibility of the town and only of the town. It can be delegated if the developer is willing, but I don't think you can force them.
And it's correct. He has to be willing to do it. Like right now, we have a, um, Brett Knoll.
Yeah.
And he's willing to upgrade the road, more gravel.
Right, but those are, those have been in place for years. Those have been approved for years. I'm talking, you're talking about piece of land.
Developer was gonna be doing it, you know, if he can handle it, fine. If not, you won't accept it then. But we'll try, I mean, but that's all we can do. We can't try if he doesn't, doesn't want it. Special permit is null and void and that's it, is, uh.
He's gonna do A and Rs anyway.
He's gonna have to do it, A and R.
He said he was gonna do six or seven A and Rs anyway. Karen Narwhal, Palm August Road. So the A and Rs don't require that.
That's correct, yeah.
He sat here and said it would be A and Rs on some of those, on some of that property.
I was just gonna clarify to Peter's point, where you had brought up about the insurance claims. It's very, very rare that the town is found at fault for insurance claims in situations such as that unless it's an egregious ignoring of a particular, you know, pot roller or situation. Because unfortunately, we have a lot of roads like that in town, so we'd be paying out claims all the time if that was the case. So I just, I just wanted the board to know that that's not a typical expense related to the roads.
The land is leased now to a farmer. I'm sorry, Diane Derrick and I live on Emerald Road, 33. And the town is, it's leased now to a farmer. Has there been any question that if the town bought it, would he continue that? And if we're looking at a plan, could it go out to residents of that road that says we'd lease it? If that's the constraint, could we go that far to just see the commitment of the residents on that road and help the town keep some land being undeveloped? That's a question I would have.
Question for the attorney. Question for the attorney?
Yes.
This property is in the estate, correct?
It, my client received it from the estate of her parents. It is individually owned by Ms. Viner now. It's no longer in the estate because the probate's been completed, but that's where she received it, yes.
Would Ms. Viner be willing to open negotiations to the citizens living around her to lease that property? Or is it her intent she wants to sell it?
Well, I mean, her intent at this point is to sell based on the contract we have, but I can't say that she wouldn't be open to other options if the town decided to, to move forward with its right of first refusal. I believe she'd be willing to discuss that, but certainly at this point, her intention would be to move forward on the contract.
Do you know what it's being leased for now? Do you know how much it's being leased for?
Six acres, six or seven acres.
I don't know the lease amount. I can find out from Ms. Viner, but I don't have that information myself.
What's our time requirement that we have left to make a decision?
Oh, we had 120 days from the end of
July 31st.
July 31st.
So that was something I was going to just caution. While I hear what you're saying, just to keep in mind, you know, what that process would take and that would be separate from the town's waving of the right of first refusal. You couldn't include the residents in that process.
If I might paraphrase, the town has what's left of 120 days since July 31st. We have the ability to either buy it or not buy it. But if you want to lease it, that is something your group would have to do on its own because that's not part of our agreement with the purchase.
I was speaking to your concern where you said that the interest would be $20,000 if the town were to borrow the $400,000 to buy it.
It could be three, four, five, six percent. I'm using it as an example.
Exactly, but that's, that was my point. If we could make up the interest, because the town would take out a loan, would that be something that would be considered? If we could also have a farmer that wanted to lease it? And I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there as an option to keep it as it is.
Justin, do you have any comment on this?
Well, just, just in terms of if it, if the town did exercise the first right, becomes town property, then we would, in this particular example, we'd have to go through a formal 30B process of RFP. RFP or an invitation for bids for these services. Then that becomes competitive. That doesn't necessarily even guarantee that the residents would be the winning bidder in that case as well. So just from a, just FYI on that one.
Right. And once, if we did that, before we had anything in place that the residents wanted to buy it, the town would now own the property and lose the taxes and also be accruing the interest that we borrowed the money for, without any permanent plan in place.
Because we wouldn't have time to have it worked out, so you would have a plan?
Well, right, because we have what's left of 120 days. So you'd have to get something permanent in place. Then, like Austin said, it would have to go through an RFP, request for proposals, who'd want to buy the land and then maybe you don't even end up with it because somebody's willing to pay more than what you want to lease it for. I mean, it's a sticky situation, you know? I mean, we, town would love to have the land, but at this point.
Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Robert Davis, I live directly across the street. At the last meeting, this board said they were going to come out and walk, look at the property. Have you all looked at the property? Have you walked the land and been there? There's two new houses going in right at the Emerald Road, right on the corner. That road is in deplorable condition. There's no asphalt on half of Emerald Road where it makes the bend to come, the 90-degree bend. The school buses go zipping up and down there, UPS trucks, Amazon trucks, that is a busy road. And just to repair that road is going to cost you more than the $400,000. There's trees here that are three and four feet in diameter. They have to be removed before you can do that road.
I mean, if
That's gonna cost the town money. Here you're talking money.
Well, if I may, through the chair, sir, what would you like to see happen?
I'd love to see a state farmland.
Farmland?
There's a lot of animal life. There's turkeys, there's bears, there's bobcats, there's coyotes. Not too many coyotes, but there's a zillion turkeys in that area, deer. I see deer there practically every other day. And there's a baby bobcat now that's about a foot long. And I have pictures of the two parents. They're magnificent. But, you know, that's going to be development within this year. Somebody's gonna buy that property because it's that large an acreage and you don't have to cut a tree down. Just put in a road, then they're gonna turn those roads over to the town. So you're gonna have a big development there, which means you are going to be forced to bring that road up to, up to speed. When it's farmland the way it is now, you can leave the road the way it is.
Leah?
Go ahead, Tameena.
I just wanted to clarify for the public's knowledge is that the entire parcel, there's still 37 acres that are intended to be purchased by developers. So those, that acreage is still intended to be developed. Just, just so that folks know that even if the town were to purchase that, there is still going to be some level of planned proposed development on the parcel.
I was gonna reiterate that, that the total acreage that's in this, that is being presented is 50-some acres. But we are only talking about that initial six, that farming's chapter land of 16 acres.
Right.
Through the chair, but a lot of that's wetland, right?
Some of it is, but it's not unbuildable.
The other, the other land is, has issues. This land is perfect land.
The 60, I'm blocking the other 37.
Came down to you. The planning board meeting said it's perfect land for development. There's not a tree on it, so all he has to do is put in foundations. And then what happens if houses go in? Unless this town just walks away and says we aren't gonna do anything with the road, what happens to the safety of the school buses that go up and down there? And the delivery trucks?
I think this is one of the crossroads that we as a town are at. We hear in the master plan and again and again that the town values open space, the town values more intentional kind of cluster building in existing town center areas and not the continual kind of sprawl. And then when opportunities like this come about, the town is, is hedgy about the cost to invest in the land to keep it open or farmable, recoup some, some, potentially recoup some level of, of cost. But not, still maintain that, the open rural sense of town. And I think that that's the crossroads that we as a town are at right now. And I, you know, I struggle a little bit because it's not, it's not prime economic development area for town to have additional revenue coming in. It could potentially down the road work as a satellite location if needed for something. But I think the initial plan would most likely be to keep it as farmable, open space. And that would be at the cost of $400,000 plus to the town. Whether that comes from proceeds that come into the town, could be utilized elsewhere or borrowed and incur those additional expenses. And I think that this is really the, the crossroads that we as, as town are at. What, what we have for value. Jen, did you have comments? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I did. I just, I wanted to, I guess, my first comment being, you know, just because if the town were to purchase it, it does, and, you know, we, we hold on to it and we evaluate, you know, what we would be able to use it for, for a few years, doesn't mean we have to hold on to it forever. We could come to the conclusion that it's, there's just nothing that we can do with it and we can put that up for sale if necessary. But my other comment, or I guess question would, would be to something that you said earlier, Leah, where, you know, we already know that the other parcel is likely to be developed and into residential homes. You know, is there, is there any way for us to, I mean, we're talking about the 16 acres here. Is there any way for us to kind of calculate how many potential homes would be put on that? Any potential cost to the town as far as, you know, estimating, you know, children that might be, be there? Like what the cost of that would be compared and take all of that into account for what that would cost the town versus the purchase price of the $400,000? Is that a worthwhile exercise? Or can we not really estimate any of that?
Well, through the chair, if, sorry to interrupt, Jen, we still have time. We still have, what, 100 days left to talk about this, roughly?
Mm-hmm. I think, so if I may, Leah, to respond to Jen's question, I think the challenge with that is that you could have somebody that wants to do a subdivision and put in several homes. Or you could have somebody that wants to do several estate lots and you're talking five-plus acre lots, so you have fewer homes. So, you know, without the potential buyer saying this is specifically what my plan is, which he doesn't have anything in writing right now, I don't know that we can require that information.
I was just gonna say, looking at the initial notice of intent to sell chap, the chapter land, it's kind of sketched out 16 acres and it looks roughly to be about maybe eight, eight lots. But that obviously would depend, I think, if it was a contiguous 30 or 53 acres or if it was the 30 plus the 16 or whatever. So it's hard to say. I think this is on water and well and septic, I'm sorry, well and septic. So I think that that would mean, correct me if I'm wrong, acre and a half minimum lots generally for, at least for, in most cases for well and septic. So if you figure 16 acres, it would probably be nine to 10 or eight to 10 lots at maximum, depending on how that was.
And it depends on how they laid out.
Right.
Because, you know, different types like A and R lots are gonna have frontage requirements and
Does that help answer, Jen?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I mean, I don't think we have, it's tough to do a cost analysis for, for individual homes, not knowing how many kids would be coming in. And our population kind of has been a little up and down as far as students and when they would hit the schools and everything. But I think that there is the, the concern of the significant wear and tear on the roads. The road.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't think whether the town purchases the property or not, except the, the other lot is gonna sell and have homes built on it. So we're gonna have that concern even if we do purchase the property. So I think that's almost a separate discussion that we just need to have on just the town infrastructure in general. How do we improve roads like that throughout town?
Right.
From, from my perspective, I'm not ready to, to turn it down just yet. I think there's still some more questions that we can ask. I would still be interested in finding out what are the multiple avenues to finance it that we might have? I'm sure we have multiple ways that it could be done, you know, either, you know, heights property money or, you know, what other, you know, loans or whatnot. I'd be interested to see what we could come up with and what it would end up costing the town. But I'm, I'm just, I'm not quite, for me personally, ready to, to say no just yet.
The attorney has a question. Nope.
Yeah.
She has a question.
In a minute.
Why do you know if you saw her hand?
I think, I think we had, I mean, I think we can continue the conversation. We'll listen to the public as well. I think we were hoping to have a little bit more of a sense of direction after this meeting for, for the attorney and for Ms. Viner as well. But at the same time, we do have the 120 days that we, as a, as a board, owe it to the town to do, continue to do due diligence. And hearing the feedback from the additional boards that they all fairly strongly are in favor of trying to, to retain it as town land is a different perspective than maybe where I thought it was gonna go. But
I just want to clarify a couple of things for the record and for the public. First, the intention of the builder, and I represent the seller, not the builder, but the intention is he's going to do seven A and R lots. I know the numbers were kind of going eight, but the intention is seven. And as it is now, our contract is subject to both parcels closing at the same time. So bottom line is if the town decides to exercise its right and purchase the 16 acres, the other 37 plus or minus acres, I believe will stay in Ms. Viner's ownership. I don't believe it will be sold to the builder because as it stands now, that's the agreement the parties have, that one is contingent on the other. So I don't believe he's gonna buy the 37 acres if the 16 do not go along with it. Basically for the reasons that he had mentioned and we've mentioned here, that the 16 acres is really where the prime buildable area is. So that's really his goalpost of what he's looking to develop. It was just the other 37 acres kind of coming along with it at, you know, much less value.
Thank you for that clarification. Sir?
May I make a suggestion? Does a town have a highway superintendent that has the ability to look at the roads that are there now and get back to the board and say, this is what it's gonna cost to fix the existing road to safe standards? Where it makes that 90-degree bend? And then also, if a subdivision goes in, they're going to want to turn those internal roads over to the town. So how much is it going to cost to maintain and plow those internal roads? So I think this board, you're a very astute gentleman on the end, but there's also a cost to bring up the existing road and you don't have that price right now. If it's gonna cost you a million dollars to bring up the road, then a $400,000 piece of property is pocket change.
So if I'm
So we, so we do have a DPW director. But we also, in 2021, we conducted a pavement condition index of all town roads. So you did an assessment of all town roads, scored them, but also calculated an associated price to bring them back up to the standards that you mentioned. I just looked up on the, on the report. Emerald would be, to bring it up to its, you know, so gravel, but also some pavement there would be just around $200,000 to bring it back up to standards for the road itself.
And that's current standards?
But that's also 2021 pricing as well. So with some inflation, you know, there's maybe some new costs there as well.
And that's current standards and not standards to bring it up to, to significantly change intersections or anything?
Right, and, and that would be just replacing gravel with gravel, pavement with pavement, wouldn't be including, you know, paving the whole thing, for example.
There's a, there's a Y at the end of the road there. And I'm telling you, it is dangerous.
So I think, go ahead, sir. Name an address, please.
Dick Palmer, thirty-seven Emerald Road. So the two lots that are being built right now on Emerald Road sold for about eighty grand each. If you're gonna spend, um, you know, four hundred thousand and sixteen acres, you're getting it for twenty-five grand an acre. So. Pretty good price.
So I think what I'm hearing is if the board, if I'm hearing the consensus of the board is that there's still some questions. Having the feedback from the additional boards, um unanimously being in favor of trying to hold on to it as. Open space at least initially and then pursuing additional avenues for, for it. Um, we might be looking to continue additionally. To um seek funding options as well as some of the road questions. Um, is that the, the consensus that I'm getting from the board?
Uh, I think it would be interesting to hear from the people who have replied, such as the planning board. What, how they expect us to finance it. It's nice to say we're gonna buy it.
So Planning Board provided that they were recommending use from the, the Heights property, the sale of the Heights. I think Planning Board was explicit in calling that avenue out. Um, I don't recall off the top of my head that the other boards and commissions explicitly called out funding sources. A lot of them were interested but did ask. Pointing to a funding source as being that their hesitation for recommending it. RDIC replied saying, um, I think not in favor of using that money, but in favor of maintaining the land. Is, is my summary correct?
So um RDIC specifically did not want to provide more detail. They feel that that's at the discretion of the select board. As Leah mentioned, the Planning Board specified, the majority members of the Planning Board specified using the funds from the sale of Rutland Heights. Um, and the Conservation Commission did not see a viable funding mechanism at this time.
And I think AgCom just had mentioned, um, pursuing a few different options and that they were willing to work with us if we wanted to. Work with nonprofits or um land trusts or anything to kind of reach out in, in. Um, because part of first right of refusal is we can dedicate it to, we can basically authorize it to go to a nonprofit. Um, that then would, would pick up some or all of the expense in addition, in, in return for management of the land or, or whatever. Is that summary correct, Glenn and, and Dick?
It is.
May, may I ask, does the AgCom have a list of specific groups that they are interested in reaching out to? Um, I just hate to leave it open-ended where we have a specific timeframe, if that's the route that the board would like to take.
Um. Paul, go ahead.
Uh, Austin, is Emerald considered a town road now or is it a private road?
I believe it's a town road.
Town road, okay. All right.
I think that stretch of Emerald is a, I think all of it is a town road, actually, yeah.
So, yeah.
They repair it twice a year.
Sorry.
They're currently resurfacing it twice a year.
Yep.
Once it leaves, twice usually.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, uh, that's what I was saying, Leah, that if there are a lot of options out there, they. They should rebring their options if they want us to help buy it. They should, we should be hearing from them on how they would recommend doing it. What kind of funds are available, what kind of conservation funds, whatever type of funds are out there. They should be coming to say, hey, here's where you can, we'll help you understand where to get the money.
And where are we in the hundred and twenty days?
Through the chair. No, I was just gonna say, Counselor, you, you said as of.
July thirty-first was.
So August first it started, right? So we're twenty-one days in. So we got a hu- we got ninety-nine days left. So, I mean, there's a little bit of time.
Ultimately, the town would have to have a town meeting to be able to purchase this. The select board nor any of the other boards don't make the decision. The townsfolk make the decision as to how the funding mechanism happens. It's not you guys' decision. Anyone, it's gonna have to go before the town. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that for the public, that it's not, you know, any board's decision. It's the town folk say yes or no.
Right. But I think the, the, the question is what options of other groups are.
I, I agree. But we keep talking about, well, they should do it, you should do it, and ultimately the townsfolk make that decision.
I don't, would that fall? Would that fall within, I don't know how that works, within the hundred and twenty days?
So I think we would have to post within the next, because we have to pull, we would have to call a special town meeting because it's not gonna be in time for the fall. So we would be looking at calling a special town meeting, so we would have to have a decision to move that forward in the next. Month or so because we need the. Um, because I think it needs to be.
Well, it looks like, uh, I mean, I don't know when fall town meeting typically is. Is it November?
It's usually the Thursday prior to Thanksgiving.
That's November?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, it looks like a hundred and twenty days from July thirty-first would be November twenty-eighth.
Oh.
There you go.
And we just have to be sure what, what all has to happen within that hundred and twenty days because I think it also needs to be, um. I don't remember off the top of my head, um, if it's execution of, or if it's just statement and funding mechanism. I felt that there was something more, but I don't, I'd have to look at the, the chapter specific language.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be very close. I just worry if, you know, God forbid something happened and we had a snowstorm and we had to postpone the meeting. Or, um, you know, if it's something that, that, that people are truly wanna proceed with, if a, a separate. A special town meeting would be worth it, but there is also a cost associated with that as well. Um, so there's a lot of factors to consider.
And I think, I know my first year or two on the board, we had an earlier November, end of October, earlier November, tas- fall town meeting. Um, and then it, because free cash being certified was taking longer, it kept getting pushed farther and farther. Um, out partially because of COVID and, and everything. So I think that there is a little bit of flexibility there. Um, as to when we have our, our usually scheduled fall town meeting anyway. Um, so it sounds like. I feel like we can continue to have this conversation. It sounds like there is interest from the board, at least in pursuing additional information. Um, maybe working with AgCom if they have land trust that's willing to, to provide funding mechanisms or opportunities or whatever. So, um, for sure. Um, and then, so we would look to postpone this hearing. Um. Or sorry, continue. Thank you, Tamika. Uh, continue. Do we wanna continue until next week and basically every week, every meeting? Or do we feel we want a little bit more time? Um, I know from the attorney and I think Ms. Viner's perspective, they were hoping to have an answer. Um, sooner than later. I also feel like we're trying to do our due diligence as a town and, and. I don't wanna continue to drag you out if we're not gonna have a decision either. So I appreciate you being here. Um, by all means and providing the information that you have.
You're welcome. May I speak to that?
Yeah.
I, I think I would prefer, and I believe Ms. Viner would too, if, if you still need more information in time. I think it makes sense to continue it for several weeks rather than one week and doing the same thing again. We'd rather just know, you know, there's another month that you're gonna do your due diligence and seek out. Options and such rather than having us continue to come back.
Yep.
Yeah, through the chair, push it a month.
Yeah.
We'll do it in a month and hopefully by then.
Yeah. Austin, do you feel like that's adequate time to kind of help us gather information? AgCom that, Glenn, that should give AgCom enough time, right?
We'll, we'll do a meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
And, or sooner.
Okay.
We work on it right away.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
September nineteenth?
Yeah, so we'll. I would take a motion to continue to September nineteenth. And if anything were to change, um, a, attorney more in, we would. Communicate that with, with you and Ms. Viner. So is there a motion to continue to September nineteenth?
Okay, how we gonna phrase this?
Just have to say motion to continue to September nineteenth, that's it.
Uh, make a motion to continue?
Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you. It's, I think there's a lot of the public that was here tonight for this discussion, so thank you for coming out and providing the information and feedback. Because we obviously are taking that under advisement. Thank you. Thanks to the boards and commissions also for submitting your, your requests or your proposals. Harry, roll call.
Sekmanai. Nerthanai. Galanai.
Jen.
Ledger, I.
White manai. Thank you all.
It's fascinating.
Moving into town administrator update, we have Austin. Have at it.
All right, I've got a fancy new, uh, way of presenting my town administrator's report. Um. This is subject to change as we're developing this. Um, thank you very much. Uh, good evening. Um, just to roll right into it, budget and finance. Um, the FY twenty-two audit has now been completed. They are finishing up drafting the document and we will receive the, the draft document shortly. That provides an ability for staff, finance team to provide comments and then they'll, um, finalize the audit to be presented to finance committee. And, um, select board. Uh, we have transitioned to Vadar. Uh, town accountant is just making some small adjustments to process. You know, the way we do our warrants and some of our payables. Um, the capital budget and plan manual will be sent to departments and committees, uh, this week. Uh, with a due date of, uh, mid-September for capital requests. Uh, discussed this also with CIPC a week or two ago. Um, the financial policies, uh, have been included in your packet. Uh, like to have an, an opportunity to, um, review these. I know this was requested by, uh, select person Ledger. Um, the goal is to review some of these policies, provide comments both from, uh, the boards, but also the, the, um, town departments as well. Uh, to provide comments for review revisions, uh, but also I think that there's some policies that should be in here that aren't currently in there. Um, really, we should have a complete financial policies manual. Uh, there's some, you know, this is kind of set a good groundwork for the town, uh, but certainly there's, there's rooms for improvement. Uh, this is an important time to be discussing this as we're also beginning the budget process in about a month or so. Uh, that's a way to guide not only our town departments and committees, uh, but also, um. Just the town overall and our financial management policies as well. Um, the right is just our year-to-date expenditures for general and water and sewer funds. Uh, the general fund, if you, uh, remove the retirement system contribution of just about a million and some odd dollars. We're actually just about at seventeen percent. Uh, but that, you know, million-plus dollars is a large chunk right at the beginning of the year. Um, this is not to be construed as a, a quarterly or financial report. I'll be planning on doing that shortly as we finish out Q one, uh, but just to give you an update and I'll include this in each of my, uh, reports as well. Uh, personnel, um, Carl, I'm proud to say Carl Christensen has been promoted to foreman of, uh, Department of Public Works. Carl's been a longtime employee, he's worked his way up through the ranks. Uh, he, um, started yesterday. He previously or currently, well, I guess not currently anymore. He was, uh, the mechanic for a while, spent a lot of time in the water department. He's kind of the guru of the water system. Uh, he's done a great job. Uh, I'm proud to say we also, uh, hired Brianna Weagle. Uh, as our conservation agent. Uh, she starts on September first. This is a, a part-time position to assist the Conservation Commission and also town departments in. Uh, work related to the conservation office. Happy to have her on board. Um, uh, our treasurer collector, Becky Tuttle, has provided notice last week of her intent to retire. Uh, in March of twenty twenty-four. Uh, wanted to, uh, not only myself, but especially Becky, wanted to make sure we have advanced notice for an important. Um, position in the finance office to make sure that we have a inadequate, uh, succession plan for, for that position. Uh, something what we'd like to bring up on the agenda in the next couple of weeks to talk about the board's, um, desire for that process. This week we'll also have another retirement, Eric, is it Helly? Helly, um, from DPW is retiring. He's also been a longtime employee. I talked to him when he was mowing the front lawn and he is very excited to be retired. Um, which is good for him and congratulations, uh, to him as well. Uh, and just an update on ongoing recruitment, still looking for a town planner. Uh, has some good leads on that. Uh, still reviewing some of the resumes. We're getting some more in for the HR coordinator. Um, administrative assessor and also some of the new positions that were funded in the budget for DPW labors. And with the promotion of, uh, Carl, we're now looking for a, a new mechanic in DPW. Any questions on personnel? Um, wanted to highlight some of the efforts of some of our dispatchers. Uh, they actually received these awards earlier in the month, but dispatcher supervisor Wilder. And dispatcher Bellevue received commendation letters for their outstanding work during, uh, separate high-stress incidents. Uh, in the case of supervisor Wilder. Um, I think I briefed the board a couple of weeks ago, there was a, a structure fire and a drowning at the same time. Uh, dispatcher Wilder was, uh, was, um, on duty at the time and managed that, uh, very well. And dispatcher Bellevue, uh, was on duty during a swatting incident several weeks ago. Um, so just wanna highlight their efforts and their work and, and thank them for their, um, for their outstanding work as well. Uh, update on projects. We've got a lot going on. Uh, the parking lot project, uh, Birm. As it's currently planned, will be installed this week. These are some pictures of the, the parking lot as it exists now. It's no longer a gravel parking lot. Uh, the dust has been reduced or minimized. Um, it looks good. Looking forward to when it's finally done. But, uh, just wanna thank the state again for their efforts and they'll be paving in, uh, in two weeks. You notice on Palmigusset Road, Route fifty-six, the curbing, granite curbing has been installed and they're prepping some of the work for the sidewalks. Um, to, uh, a resident's question about, um, relocation of the utility poles. Um, they are still, um, on schedule to be completed before the winter. Um, because the project is so far ahead in advance, they were planning on doing it in the fall. Their plan is to still do it in the fall because they were planning on doing it, uh, uh, on working within our schedule as proposed. They didn't plan on us being ahead of schedule. Uh, wanna give the board and the public a heads up. Um, the Miles Road project, uh, water main installation project began today. That'll be a, a couple of month project. It's estimated to be completed in November. The contractor believes it'll be, uh, completed ahead of time. This is, um, from Route fifty-six, about a thousand feet of water main replacement. This was identified as a high priority need for the water department for water main replacement. There's been a lot of, um, water main breaks in that particular section of Miles Road. Um, also, uh, our, um, wonderful project manager for the website project, he's doing a lot of good work. Um, I think it's estimated to go live in November if all goes well. She's doing a lot of good work cleaning up our website. Um, and looking forward to introducing that to the public. Um, with the addition of a conservation agent, we needed some office space. And we thought it was a good opportunity to reconfigure the planning and community development office to also include conservation as a lot of the work. Uh, that they both do will be together. This is a picture of the reconfigured office. Wanna give the project manager slash interior designer slash he does everything. Credit for, um, one, cleaning up the office a little bit, but coming up with the configuration. We also had some assistance from DPW. Uh, so the, the intent is to have both of them working out of this office, but also there's, as you can see, there's some. Um, tables to, to meet with folks, lay down some plans and talk about, um, their particular projects. Um, and also just wanna congratulate the Rutland Library. They were awarded ten thousand dollars from, um, the Museum on Main Street Initiative. For their Rutland Then and Now programming. Any questions? Um, and then finally, I just wanna to give the board and, and also just kind of have a, a brief discussion. Uh, I was approached by the Small Business Development Center at Clark University. Um, Small Business Development Centers, uh, is actually a, a national initiative, uh, but there's, um. Actually seven offices, regional offices located in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Their headquarters is out of UMass Amherst. Uh, the Worcester Regional Office is, is located at Clark. Uh, their professional service, uh, comprise a professional staff, but also graduate students in the urban planning, business development majors. Uh, that provide, uh, free consulting services to, um, small businesses and also municipalities for business growth and strategy. Um, they operate kind of three core programs, which is the advisory services I just mentioned, government contracting and international trade services. Um. Through just general networking, they found out about our Rutland Heights and some of our town-owned property. And they offered to provide a str- uh, free updated strategic marking and now, marketing analysis. And, uh, master plan of our Rutland Heights property and some other, again, town-owned property. I thought this was a good opportunity. As you look at our, um, reuse plan, which is included, I believe, in your packets, it's twenty-six years old. Um, things have changed in twenty-six years. Um, so this is an opportunity to kind of take a look at what the market. So this is an opportunity to kind of take a look at what the market for 2023 looks like and provide an updated master plan for not only, again, that crucial property, town-owned property in the center of town, but also, again, some of our other properties that we have. So the scope of this project would be, it would be about a six-month project, which would include community engagement sessions with members of the public and boards and commissions and also would assist with, after the deliverable of that report is presented, would assist with business outreach to those particular sectors that were identified in that report. And again, just want to stress that this would be free to the town of Rutland and provide us with an updated plan for that property as well. Sure?
Have you notified Mike RDIC?
Yes, I have, and the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, so hopefully I'll hear something in the very near future. Because I like the idea, but I want the town to be involved.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One of the things I had talked about with Mike a number of times for RDIC is kind of the Heights property, that original visioning and master plan for the Heights property was done 26 years ago, I think. And now that a parcel has been sold, as well as town has changed a lot in 26 years, that we're investigating that community outreach piece and kind of where town envisioned some of that going, I think is really useful. And having an opportunity to do that in consultation with our master plan that hopefully Planning Board will review soon and get through as well as in the context of Harbor Homes going in and everything, I think is really valuable. So I think that it's a lot of good work and good resource to kind of help us do some of that visioning that we're not so good at maybe.
Yeah, and I, Patty Inwood, One Haven Hill Road. I think different lenses are always going to be important, you know, someone coming in and looking at it with fresh eyes might have different ideas and more information is always better. I love it.
And this also would help achieve one of the Select Board's goals, which is to identify town-owned properties that could, you know, possibly be used for economic development purposes. So this is an opportunity to kind of get one of your goals done as well. And I, you know, I think what's also helpful, because the conversation actually started, you know, what businesses could potentially go in there? And they said, well, why don't you do an analysis first? Again, get an updated perspective on what the market of 2023 looks like. You know, like I said, a lot of things have changed over the years. But also after the fact, they have those relationships with the business community, small and large, that they can, you know, kind of use this as a kind of a marketing tool to get those businesses to come into town. You know, or if it's identified as not business use, that also, you know, kind of educates us as a community as well. You know, maybe there's other uses that are not from an economic development perspective as well, so.
Thank you. Do you need, do you want to continue to pursue this with the board? Does the board have questions, concerns about this? Jen, do you have any questions or concerns or anything?
Nothing for me, no.
I mean, I think it's great and I think it's needed and a huge benefit to the town. And there's no expense on the town and I-
Price is right.
Right. And I think that we're at a point now that we have a lot of pieces in place that we're ready to take this on also and continue to utilize, you know, Worcester has a lot of economic development growth and we know Clinton and Gardner that have invested in economic development have had successful economic development also. So I think if we want to have intentional economic development, we need to do something more than what we have been doing. And this is a good, in my opinion, a good step forward.
I agree, Leah.
I agree. If things haven't progressed over the many years, the way they've been going, then they're not going to progress much more going forward without an outside source helping us.
True.
So, I mean, so if there's a general consensus to kind of proceed, I think the next steps would be, you know, to formally reach out and ask for their assistance. I don't believe that there would be a contract or anything. It's just more so just that formal outreach. So if there's a general consensus of the board to kind of move forward with this, or if you want to make a vote, of course, that's totally fine too. But if you kind of support this initiative, I'd be happy to reach out and kind of start the next steps on that.
Tamika, can we make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to appoint a Town Administrator Austin as lead point man on contacting the college/university and moving forward with this planning process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, conversation? You're none. We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Y'all an I.
Jen? And White man I. Thank you. Thank you, Austin. And thank you for working with RDIC and economic development also. Kind of in the loop with all of it. So I think their buy-in is hugely important also. But I think it's a huge benefit to the town. Thank you. And just, if I may, just to kind of reiterate about the financial policy piece. Jen had asked about them a while ago, I think, Jen, and I asked that they be included so we see what is existing currently. And I've asked Austin and kind of the finance team, Becky and Donna, Becky, Lisa, Donna, the assessors a little bit, as well as, it's been sent to FinCom as well, just to kind of put eyes on it and work to update and overhaul kind of best practices, you know, kind of what we do, what best practices are. And then it'll come back before us also. But if you have any questions or comments or anything for it, by all means, Austin and Tamika will kind of collate it.
Will we be setting this up for an agenda item in the future?
I think, yeah.
I think that would be good to at least have a formal discussion about them as well.
Okay.
Yep. Is that your update? Do you have more for your update?
That's it.
Thank you. Moving into new business, we have the Rutland Regional Emergency Communication Center Dispatch Fiscal Year '24 through '26 Collective Bargaining Agreement. We have, I'm going to ask for ratification of the agreement. Is there any, there's?
I make a motion. We ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Rutland and the Rutland Regional Emergency Dispatch employees, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, AFL-CIO Local 435 for ratification.
Second, the motion.
The motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Calvin I.
Jen? White man I, with appreciation to Mike and Austin and the union negotiation team. So, thank you. I know it's been ongoing for a while and I appreciate all the work, everyone and time and work. Next, we have Hope Lives Here.
Hi.
Thank you for sticking with us tonight.
It's always entertaining, I'm not going to lie. I'm going to give this to Austin though, because I didn't get to give that to you. It's a little snack.
I was wondering where you got that.
Right, right. Patty Inwood, Hope Lives Here. I'm also here with Donna Byrne and Karen Phillips. You cleared the room before I got up. What happened here? So if you don't know me, I am a Rutland resident and in 2015, I lost my son Luke to suicide. And the good part was, I was in an incredible community, Rutland, and I work in Boylston. I'm a fourth-grade elementary school teacher there. And those two communities came together and really supported my family in the most incredible way. And what I realized in the years that passed was not everyone had that. So in a desire to help another family, you know, maybe suffer just a little less on their journey, we started Hope Lives Here. So we were founded in Rutland, but we live and hold in. That's where our space is. And currently we have four meetings a month. We used to trek in here to the library with our box of pamphlets and supplies. And now we have four meetings a month. We had 53 new clients last year, which is one week, which is incredible. But it speaks to the need and I think it speaks to the warmth and the love and the caring that we bring to everything that we do. So we are here tonight because we want to say thank you. And that's why I brought the sweets. I wanted to say thank you for being so sweet. Rutland has just been incredible in the support that you all have given us. And we get to see you, Leah, and the team when we come in here to talk. But we were also the beneficiaries of the Wusox Night of the Town Takeover. And that was like, like nothing I could have imagined, to have created something that was up on a billboard, you know, that was being recognized. And we just had so many people come and speak with us and let us know that they either had been to visit us or had sent someone our way. And again, Rutland has just been so phenomenal and I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and all of your support of our organization. So we are having our third annual Walk to Remember. It's on Sunday, October 15th. It's going to be the same route that we have been doing coming out of Glenwood Elementary School. Karen at the school is on board, the police department's on board. We're hoping to have over 400 people again this year, so that's exciting. And it's just a beautiful day for us to stop and remember the person that we're missing in our hearts. So it's just a great event for our clients and the families when they come out that day. So we just want to say thank you for allowing us to make this happen here in my hometown. So thank you so much for all of your support.
Hopefully you'll all come and walk with us.
Yes, come walk, come walk. It's a beautiful day.
And thank you for all the work that you do because it's, there's a huge need as you've just spoken to.
Yeah.
I think I've seen that you've been doing a lot more outreach because that need keeps-
Yeah, I should have mentioned that. So we're working on right now, we're going to be starting a teen support group because there is so much going on right now around parental loss because of opioids. So that's just astounding right now. So we're very excited to have that up and going by January 2024. And then one of our, a change to our mission statement is, you know, because of the experience with my own son and mental health and suicide, we want to be part of the process of getting ahead of the suicide issue as well as the addiction issue. So we're, I just went to my high school, Tohonto, and we're going to be working with them to get a program around anxiety and addiction in there. And then we're actually starting a Hope Lives Here teen group at Wachusett High School, focusing on the hope and again around the mental health issues. So it's just incredible and we're just so grateful that we can, you know, work together to make a difference in just our little corner of the world, you know? So thank you, Leah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Sunday, October 15th, we'll try to keep kind of plugging that periodically in our updates and everything also as we can get it-
After-party lilac hedge farm. They've been so good to us. We're so thrilled with the success that they're having in town. And so Donna was actually their babysitter.
Yes.
The boy's babysitter, which is amazing, but they, they've been wonderful supporters of us as well. So we're happy to go there afterwards and hug one another and take care of one another. It's what we all need.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do. I know it's emotional work and very much needed work, so thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. Now we're going to sneak out?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
Thanks for sticking around too. So, moving on, we have the Community Bulletin Board at the Historical Society. We had a request from the Rotary Club last, our last meeting to have it removed and disposed of and we had some questions. So I think Tamika and Austin followed up with Chris. And the, we have an update, but Tamika, Austin, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. So I spoke to Chris after the last meeting and he went out and he took a look and he said it would be a very small endeavor to take it down. He checked out the electrical because he thought at first it might have been connected to that yellow flashing sign. He said it's not. So he said if the board approves of it, they're happy to take it down and dispose of the materials, no problem.
So I think that was the big question as far as who and how. And Chris and DPW don't think it's any issue. And we had communication, the Historical Society was fine with it going, the Rotary was fine with it going. So I think we would just want a motion then to allow it to be removed and disposed of.
It'd be DPW that does it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve DPW, Rutland DPW, to remove and dispose of materials following the Historical Society's bulletin board.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Jen, did you have anything?
Nope. Thank you.
We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Y'all an I?
Jen?
Ledger I.
And White man I. Thank you. And thank you to Chris and DPW for kind of taking care of that for us. Mr. Schultz, thank you for sticking around. Sorry it's so late. Next on our agenda, we have one-day liquor licenses for Eastview Farm. There's a few weekends here, the August 26th and 27th, September 2nd and 3rd, and October 7th and 8th, October 21st and 22nd. We have the application here. It's, the application is under Mr. Schultz and everything has been paid. And it would be for wine and malt beverages, so our beer and wine is our one-day liquor licenses allow. And he has here that he will have certified bartenders. I know that that's one of the questions also. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board? Karen?
The liquor licenses aren't in the, aren't in the packet. Have we checked to make sure that all the insurances are up to date and everything? Because usually that's in the packet. It wasn't there, so I'm asking the question.
Yes, the insurance is all up to date. In fact, I actually met, his insurance agent was kind enough to come down to the office last week. So we met and spoke with one another. So the insurances are up to date for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Karen. Harry, did you have a question?
Yeah, is this the first time you're running these one-day liquor licenses for Farm?
No.
You run them in the past?
We've got them in the past.
Okay.
Jen, do you have any questions, comments, anything?
Not for me, thank you.
So.
Yeah, I don't want, just, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for the following dates, September 2nd, September 3rd, October 7th, October 8th, October 21st, October 22nd, October 26th, and October 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For Schultz Farm, Eastview Farm at 163 Maple Street, Rutland.
I think, can I just, I think it's supposed to be August 26th and August 27th, not September.
That's correct.
Okay, just because these are added on later.
Oh, did they say September? I'm sorry. August 26th and August 27th. I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Calvin I.
Jen?
Ledger I.
White man I. Thank you. Thanks for sticking around too. Sorry. We're moving into general bylaw review. The major, the bulk of our meetings is covered and this was something we had asked to kind of, to keep things moving and get these bylaws reviewed to hopefully get them before town meeting. So we, as a board, had agreed to look at Treasurer Collector and Accountant. It's already almost eight o'clock, so I'm not sure that we're going to get beyond those here. Just as a heads up.
But I have confidence that we'll get through these two. So just a little bit of bylaw history, that there was a single bylaw called Accounting and Collecting, which the committee split them up and focused them more on the offices, a Treasurer Collector and Accountant, than on some of the processes. Processes are still there, but the focus of the bylaws are on the offices. Generally, we, we split the contents of that original bylaw into the two and then we ran- And then we ran, in this case, the treasurer, collector, through Becky. And Becky's comment was, that doesn't say very much about what I do because I have a lot more in my job description. So we've updated it to include more functions in her job description. Focusing on that, um, the usual purpose and authority. And pretty please, let's get the focus in the right place. If I can scroll, there we go.
I apologize. I excuse myself a moment.
Certainly. So treasurer, collector fundamentally collects everything that's due, nearly everything that's due to the town. Taxes, water, you, water and sewer use fees, interest penalties, legal fees. There are lots of things that the treasurer doesn't collect, dog licenses. Uh, fees to the Conservation Commission for all of our permits, fees to the, to the uh planning board for its permits. There are many things that are not included, but the bulk of the money that comes into the town goes directly to the treasurer, collector. Not surprisingly, after collecting it, the treasurer, collector deposits the monies into the treasury, into bank accounts. The, at least once a week is, is an historic artifact. Treasurer does it as often as she chooses. But it's all, it's at least once a week, but it's usually every day that something comes in and goes straight in. See as a new one, treasurer, collector may invest otherwise idle town funds. So that if there's a fund that isn't you, doing anything, that no one's using, but that the town can make money by investing it, we inherently give the treasurer, collector the authority to do that investment. Uh, the treasurer, collector shall manage long and short term borrowing, subject to approval by the select board. Because remember, you are the folks who enter into contracts. Uh, really new one, because this is what she does, spends a lot of her time on. Treasurer, collector shall administer the town's payroll and manage employee benefits packages and employee enrollment therein. Those are the things that she generally does. Yes.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Of course.
So since they're hiring the AP clerk and the HR director, will that be impacted by the bylaw as those responsibilities shift? Should it say that she can delegate?
You don't have to say it, because of power you can delegate.
Okay, got it.
And in fact, the HR clerk would be delegated HR responsibilities and duties from the town administrator based on that bylaw.
Okay.
Questions about the core duties? One could argue that section four doesn't belong in this bylaw because it's not a duty or a responsibility of the treasurer, collector, but it's got to be somewhere. The planning board takes in money periodically. I keep pointing to where Dick isn't right now. Takes money for permit applications, Concom gets monies for its permit applications. This just says that anybody who collects money has to turn it over to the treasurer, collector to be disposed, to be dealt with properly. Um, and equally is B is that Tamika, I used to do this, Tamika does it now. She has to fill out two forms for every deposit, one for the treasurer, one for the accountant, and have to say the same thing.
Not to, this isn't better off in somewhere along the lines of general provisions or something, um, because I feel like, I mean, you just said that it's not specifically a function. The treasurer, collector is the one responsible for receiving them, but it's on the onus of everyone else to turn them in. And it's nowhere men, nowhere else mentioned that any other, because Concom is appointed and planning board is elected and there's a lot of different avenues for groups that may be obtaining monies. Um, and it may not always be, I, I don't know in a bylaw if it should be spelled out somewhere, like I said, under general provisions or something, that those groups are responsible for turning monies in.
I have no problem talking about that with the committee tomorrow. I, it's, this is not a big deal, I mean, for that. Um, it's here because it has historically been in the collecting part of the collections bylaw, but
I.
I, I said it, you said it, you're right. It doesn't really belong here. We just didn't spend a lot of time thinking about where else it would live.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how the rest of the board feels either, but that was just kind of my, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
I've worked with it for twenty yard years, so. I'm pretty familiar.
The rest of this bylaw is exactly as it was when we passed it in twenty eighteen. Which all has to do with how the treasurer, collector can enter into agreements with people who owe money to the town. Actually, I guess it's specifically tax title, but as I say, the contents are exactly as they have been, no changes here. And that's it for treasurer, collector.
Just a question, Peter.
Yes, sir.
You had met, or Becky had come to your committee and met and sat down and go over all this thing, right?
Yeah, I went to her.
Okay.
And she's reviewed it a couple of times and she, and she's satisfied with the condition it's in now.
Okay.
Similarly, the accountant, split out of accounting and collecting. Tried to focus more on the accountant office. This is a very small bylaw. So let's talk about the important parts. It actually starts at the bottom to me. The accountant prescribes the methods of accounting and the forms. Part of her job is saying how we all interact with her. Um, this is another one that's funny in that it's not a responsibility of the accountant that says everybody has to, uh, has to submit open bills by the twentieth of June every year. Do I know that we do this? I have no idea. I have no idea if the departments are late or early. This is a provision that is in the bylaw today and I can't tell you whether or not people are, are faithful to that. And since we've had nothing, this is not a knock, we've only had a part-time accountant ever. And so the twentieth is a kind of, it's a stake in the ground, but I'm not convinced that it's a hard line. There has to be enough time for the accountant to process. I get that.
Did you talk to Donna? I know we've had some turn, turnover in the town accountant office.
I have not talked to Donna. I've talked to the previous two accountants. So Dan and, and.
Jean.
Jean, thank you. And they both, so, so yes, I'll send this off to Donna to get her opinions also.
I, I showed Donna this, uh, this on Friday and she didn't have any concerns.
Okay, it, I just was curious if it makes sense to say that by the, by June twentieth of each year or if it's just by the end of the fiscal, you know, because we have those carryover warrants, right? That into July that does provide some time, but I can understand not wanting to get everything that's open on June thirtieth.
In fact, I think it has to be before June thirtieth from a process point of view because there's work she needs to do for every open bill. And so it'd be unfair to get it very close to the thirtieth. Is a week and a half enough time?
I mean, if she didn't.
If she were concerned, I would expect to, to have said something, but I will, I will ask some, some targeted questions of her.
And I guess my question about the, to the previous one as well, is this the best location for this? Because it's more the onus of the other people that would be submitting bills?
Yeah, there's, it, it, it's almost as though that and the other two belong in some other. I wouldn't put it in general provisions because I don't think it's broad enough. Because, but a general financial provisions bylaw could take those.
But do we want to create another bylaw for two things?
We'll talk about it. We, the committee, will just, we'll talk about it.
Or maybe out of the policy discussion with Austin and the, and the finance team?
That's true. That might be better as policy. And in fact, I, uh, I'll have to have a discussion with them about whether the other one in the, in the treasurer, collector makes sense to be only policy or should be in bylaw.
Yeah.
There's a discussion there. Finally, I know I called it the least important. It's not really the least important, but yep, the accountant is responsible for getting audits done, compliant with Massachusetts DOR. Yep, okay. This is almost motherhood and apple pie. Because in fact, you'll notice we even call out the Mass General Law section that require those actions. My memory is not fantastic, but I believe that we didn't have those in originally and Dan's, Dan really wanted them in. So we put them in.
And I know you kind of addressed this with the previous one, sorry, and Tamika's question, but under authority, um, it is transferable or delegatable for treasurer, collector in, in the con, the specific question was for town's payroll. But i- in.
It is my understanding that a response, that a, that a duty conveyed upon an office by law is delegatable. I believe that's true for any.
Okay.
Duty.
I guess I'm just, because in some bylaws, we're calling out specifically that it can be delegated and others, it's just referring to.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we, that I don't think we did really well is figuring out every single delegation thing that we should or shouldn't put in the bylaw. We mostly either kept it the way that it was, either from the bylaw that exists today or wherever we stole the section from, wherever we plagiarized it from, um, it probably was in the original. There are only a couple that we thought of, um, but I don't believe we have to put in bylaw that something can be delegated.
So I guess, I guess.
Unless, unless you're trying to limit to whom it can be delegated. And then you want to be more clear.
Right, but I guess then some of my question, and this maybe is, in my head, part of codifying everything is to try to make everything streamlined and so that it reads similarly. And if I read some of the bylaws and it talks about what authority, that the, the, these authorities are delegatable and then I read other bylaws that don't mention anything about the ability to be delegated, then as a more layperson, I might think that because it doesn't explicitly call out the fact that it can be delegated, it can't. Or, or because some, some do say that they can be delegated. And so that's, I guess, my question is, in the sense of codifying and streamline, streamlining everything, should everything either be calling out that it's delegatable or everything calling up, not calling out that it's delegatable and just a, the assumption is that it can be unless to your point, it is explicitly not able to be delegated or explicitly only delegated to a sp- particular entity.
Yeah, we could talk about that too.
I don't know how the board.
Well, I just, we, what, what would be the circumstance where you would have to delegate? If we didn't have somebody in the position or, I mean, I.
I, there's nobody in the, well, no, actually, it can't be delegated if there's nobody in the position, then the authority goes up. It's if, when, when town administrator goes on vacation. He has a whole bunch of duties. Somebody has to perform those while he's gone.
Oh, no, no, I understand. I'm saying for this specifically, I don't know.
I think my example in this, if I may, was like the town, I think Tamika asked about town payroll because if we're hiring a, a payroll, AP payroll person, that it, the bylaw explicitly calls out that the town administrator, the town, sorry, treasurer, collector shall administer the town's payroll. But then if we hire an individual or an entity to do that, it doesn't explicitly say that it's transferable. It's implied. But in other bylaws, it's.
Just designate, right?
It, or designate or can be, or by designate or whatever. And so I guess my question is for, in my sense of codifying and, and streamlining everything, it's keeping everything consistent across all the bylaws. And if some are saying and others aren't, is there, should everything say or should everything not?
Right, does it hurt to put it in? Just put it in, yeah?
It adds words. If it, if we don't need it anywhere, why put it anywhere? That's, that's my belief about bylaws. You keep them as short and as simple and sweet as possible. So if we don't need to mention it, why bother even mentioning it unless there's an explicit reason to?
But I thi, if I may, I don't mean to speak for you, but I think what you're saying is say Austin does go on vacation and somebody is his designate. This, could somebody say, why did he pick that person as opposed, or is that person qualified? If it doesn't say.
That question can be asked, asked no matter what, no matter what's in the bylaw.
Yeah, I guess you're right. Yeah, I guess you're right.
As a, I mean, as a practical matter, anybody can ask anything.
Yeah, yeah.
When it comes to delegation, I guess, I'm just looking here and what is your thought process of how it applies to treasurer, collector, and accountant?
Well, I think as we're hiring, I'm, I'm looking at treasurer, collector specifically as part, section three, part E, the treasurer, collector shall administer the town's payroll. And we have a, an open position for an AP payroll clerk that would come in and do that administering. And the treasurer, collector shall manage employee benefits packages and employee enrollment therein. If we were to expand on the HR side and there's an HR person or a group that comes in to, to help manage the benefits piece, then those would be positions that I assume would be delegated to those individuals or those, that entity.
Um, I hear you. I guess I'm looking and saying, okay, what does the word administer mean? Does that give her full power to delegate? Her job is to administer the town's payroll, so therefore, if her job is to administer it, can she transfer some of that power to a assistant?
Right.
If, if the word administer means that, so we don't need to clarify delegation, but and the same with manage. What is the definition of manage and what she has allowed to do to manage employee benefits?
I guess my, my point is a little bit of a broader, that's an example in this bylaw that doesn't full, specifically state either way. My question, or my question, I guess, is broader. If we're trying to codify and streamline bylaws from, from start to finish and some bylaws are explicitly calling out that, that powers can be delegated and other bylaws are not calling out, then in my head, either everything that can be, that just in the authority, that this article is enacted under authority granted by NGL, chapter forty, section twenty one. Some, I don't know if there's a phrase about delegation that can go there and that way it's just assumed that these are also things that are overseen by the treasurer, collector, but still can be delegated, similar to what we have in the Select Board bylaw and the Town Administrator bylaw um, about things that can be delegated. And so I guess that's where I'm coming from, is either have it for everywhere or not anywhere.
Peter, didn't you start off this um, a couple of weeks ago saying that anything can be delegated?
That is my understanding.
So would it be, so I was trying to look back in the general provisions because I think that's where we started, right? I didn't, and I didn't see anything explicitly in there. Would it be helpful just to put it in there and say unless otherwise prohibited by statute or, I mean, just to clean this up for this conversation? Because then that would apply to all the general bylaws and you wouldn't have to have it specifically in each.
Right. Right.
Bylaw.
I, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Like it, I said, I think that's, I mean, I'm struggling with, in some places it's called out and other places it's not. And in my head, I would like to see everything as the continuity across everything as much as possible. And so if it's called out one place, then call it out everywhere. Or I like the idea of having it in general provisions just as a, if, if it's applicable or, or whatever.
Because you do have, any department had made delegate enforcement authority for enforcement and penalties. Another provision somewhere in this general provisions bylaw for the delegation of authority, maybe would.
I said it three times now. We'll talk about it tomorrow as a committee.
Sure. All right.
Jen, do you have any questions, comments, concerns about any, the treasurer, collector or the accountant? Jen, do you have any questions, comments, concerns about any, the treasurer, collector, or the accountant?
No, I think she's covered everything.
All right, that's our agenda for the evening.
Um, I know we had said we would do more if there was space. I think it's a little bit after eight o'clock and I don't know if there's any other short ones that aren't going to involve a long conversation.
Uh, probably not.
So, so then we, our next meetings, we have on August twenty-ninth, we have a general bylaw review. I think that's the fifth Tuesday of the month, I think.
Yes, it is.
And then our regular schedule is Tuesday, September fifth, because Monday is the Labor Day. And then September, Monday, September nineteenth. Um, and we'll see how we go with the general bylaw review. I think we'll start with, um, Board of Public Works and FinCom, I think, are the two that we're looking at, I think.
I think those are next in line.
Yeah, I think that they are.
Yes, FinCom, a- actually, yeah, Board of Public Works, which we purposely skipped over.
Right, tonight, yeah.
And then next in line is FinCom CIPC. It's up to you if you want to look at relevant funds. We're not changing anything. Um, Town Council's a big one, and by that I mean important.
And
One of those are Scenic Roads, has some interesting things you should be aware of.
Can you remind me, Peter, your general bylaw, ad hoc bylaw committee, you're not looking at, um, zoning bylaws. If there's zoning bylaw conversations, we, that's with planning board, correct?
Generally, that's true. We, the committee is going to draft and pass to planning board two or perhaps three proposed amendments for inclusion in fall town meeting. Because there's one that's, that directly impacts the general bylaws. There is one that, after a few discussions, everybody thinks it's a good idea. And then there's one more of what I call technical corrections. Where in zoning bylaw or refers to Article fourteen, and there is no Article fourteen in the by, in the zoning bylaws, that's a problem. And we found a few of those as we were redrafting, not redrafting, as we were reformatting the by, the zoning bylaw.
Oh, that was just one of the questions I think that we had
So we, we are, our, our intent is not to take over for the planning board bylaw subcommittee. They are a, they're they're in a little chaos at the moment because the chair did not get reelected. It didn't run for reelection this time. And so I don't know, no one's sure if she wants to be on it. Nobody knows what the structure's going to be, so they haven't set one up yet. They haven't constituted one. But I have needs I need to get done, so I'm going to sort of persuade them to push forward some actions.
Peter, does the planning board have the authority to submit an article to the town by itself?
No.
That brings me to an interesting question. Does the select board have to do that?
Select board is the only body that can, on the town's behalf, place an article on the warrant.
So wouldn't that somehow also involve us then?
Of course it will.
Looking at the bylaw?
Of course. Well, that's up to you to how much you review it, but you don't have approval over the bylaw. You only have a decision to place or not place on the warrant.
Okay.
And historically, planning board holds public information sessions on
Planning board is required to hold a public hearing on every bylaw amendment.
I couldn't remember if it was an information session or
Nope, that's actually, Mass General Law says it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other business to come before the board? Jen, thanks for zooming in from hearing none. I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
We'll call Harry.
Segment I.
Matt's an I.
Y'all an I.
Jen.
Ledger I.
Whitman I. We're adjourned eight oh eight.